All right, it's nine oh five, we're gonna call this Board of Supervisors meeting out of recessed order. Would you like to do the invitation here, Patton, or is Brad here?
I don't see it, but I'll take care of it though. All right, everybody, while we thank you for this day and thank you for being our going out there, thank you for all the things you've done and all the things you're about to do in this meeting. Let us conduct the business of this county, love God, and make sure that we have a decent citizens at heart as we go forward. Let all hearts, minds be receptive of the mission at hand, which is to improve the quality of life for all this community. And we'll be kept to you all the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Uh, we got some people gonna do the pledge for us this morning. And these young folks are from?
Nexus Middle School.
Nexus Middle School, okay, thank you. Y'all ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Y'all hold on just a second. All right, let's see who grabbed me first. We'll give that sheriff up there. Brooklyn Carr. Ashton James. Kobe Gil. Thank y'all, all of you for being being this set here. Thank, thank y'all. We need a motion to approve the dockers. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries. We got any special presentations today? Special presentation? County business?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Under county business, I'm gonna address the raise that we gave to the Cheshire Clerk. And Scott, have you came back with a conclusion on that?
The, not fully yet. The, I received some material from Rainey's office showing an agreement between the county and the Cheshire Clerk's and other clerks have done. So I'm still reviewing that, you know, look back at it on that.
Well, excuse me. I'm doing my research too, man, and from what people in the legislature tell me, the only way elected officials can get a raise is through them. And if you wanna give the office some money, that's one thing, but to change somebody's salary, only the legislature can do that. Now, if something different in the Board of Supervisors have the power to just get elected officials a raise, maybe they're gonna change that and slip out of it. But that mean everybody in the county be getting a raise.
Yeah, you're correct, as far as the elected officials are concerned, that's, the agreements that have been sent to me are between the clerk's office and the county and the person, the individual and the office. That's all I was possible to email back.
So, now you're gonna confuse me. So, the money is just going to the office and not the individual?
As I, having completed, I was gonna send over what, what I found once I had a chance to pull the statute really completely, but the agreements that were sent to me by Rainey were office to county.
That's something totally different.
But I have not approved anything yet, supervisor carries.
Okay, let me ask this question. So if it goes to the office, what will it be utilized?
Again, it's part of records, keeping up with your records, county records, that's the statute that it falls under. My last plan, I'll do is send all this into a memo so you can see what this is what other counties have done, and it's a little bit different than what, you know, we originally approved. So there's the negative authority asking to look into.
So that was the motion that was made? Cause to my understanding, a different motion was made.
It was pending legal review, yes.
So what was the motion made?
The motion was to give, like, the Cheshire Clerk twelve thousand or fifteen thousand dollars a year. And that was what was pending.
And it go in the office, not for the salary of the Cheshire Clerk?
That's correct.
That's what she's saying, but I, I understood as the clerk herself, that that's not what the agreement Rainey sent to me. That's why I was coming to report back.
Well, that's the problem then. Well, probably then I thought it was more that we was increasing another elected official's salary.
Yes.
That's what I heard. Now, if it's something different, that's my bad.
I understood it going to the staff because of the workload of public records requests, is how I understood it.
And the record restoration.
Well, they already, they already get compensated for that.
It was an influx.
Is that something?
They already get compensated for that.
Has there not been an increase in that?
Well, well, I ain't gonna debate it. What I'm saying is, when, when somebody come to the clerk's office and want anything out of their office, then there is a fee that they have to pay to get this information. Now, they're gonna be getting double paid if we gonna pay them, and they already getting paid to do it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so this, according to the statute, it's, would be things that the county are supposed to keep up with and, and respond to. Again, I'll say it clearly, but it's not confirmed yet, supervisor carries.
While we edit, on that note, I wanna go back to the E nine one one raises also. Because I've been getting calls in regards to this, and I went back and I read the minutes and everything, and it does say that the entire county is to get raises, a two dollar raise. And I feel like we shouldn't elect the E nine one one in this case. So, I had missed to look and see what it would cost the county.
It costs around sixty-five thousand dollars.
Sixty-five thousand, or, cause I think it's thirteen. You told me, I think it's, you told me ten?
There's eleven, and then, and then.
And then, and then. Okay, so, I, I don't think that should be an elective, but all those raises. Cause we can go back, can we go, we can go back in July and get this from the city, right?
No. That's why we said we're gonna take it till June or so, and then, then that'll be brought back up, and that'll be the only one we'll be discussing.
I just don't see how we could elect that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The problem is this, to my understanding, when, when you make a motion and pass and say the entire county, then it should be the entire county. Unless we come back and do something totally different and our minutes reflect what we do. Now, to my understanding, in June or whatever the case may be, we can't go back and get reimbursed from what we already did. But we can contact the city and let them know that we have raised their salaries two dollars or whatever the case may be, and then Scott, what they gonna do?
As of July one of twenty-six, or twenty, yeah, twenty-six, then they would owe us the average of ten.
So, so what I'm saying is, from right now to July, it's not gonna cost us sixty-five thousand dollars, cause that's not gonna be the whole year. There's gonna be less than that, and then once July passes, then we can get the money from the city and put it wherever we need to put it.
I think it's set, their budget's set October first.
So we give them the, the amount for in July for them to put in their next fiscal budget.
Yeah, that's what the city wouldn't raise, which has a budget.
From those few months, from here to those few months, it wouldn't cost us sixty-five thousand. That was for the entire year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
What I like to do is, I, I was looking at, and that's salary too. I like to see that she goes to what, you know, make the amount that Chucky makes, keep those department heads in, in line. Cause I think Chucky is over a department, and it is over a department, so just keep them in line. So I don't even think it would be. We're trying to keep it in line. So I'll make a motion.
Let me ask a question. So Mr. Turner, by a motion being already made for to give all of our employees a two dollar raise, why would we have to make another motion to give them a raise, or the motion gonna be to do something else with the budgeting where we can put the money in the budget? That's what the raise, motion gonna be?
The budget that was approved by the board did not include nine one one, is that correct? So you need to adjust that, yes.
You need to amend the budget to put.
And out of abundance of caution, I'd do a paying loo claim along. The, the law says on, on you approve a budget, you don't do a paying loo claim, but just in the middle of the year though, you do. So just as a bonus of caution, I'd go ahead and stick those paying loo claims as well.
Make a motion on the floor.
You got a motion?
Set.
Any discussion?
Do we have funds?
Never be there. We keep, we keep asking for more money and more money. I don't know if we have the funds or not.
We, we getting it everywhere else. We gotta have funds.
I, I can go back, I, I feel like yes.
Pending funds available?
And I have two dollars for employees per hour, except the nets set to match Chucky's.
How much the increase is that? Any more discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Any other county business? Uh, Scott, that memo I handed you, is that a, something that needs to be, uh?
This, this president, is the engineer here?
Yes.
That's okay. You gonna do it under your.
He's fixing, he's fixing to come up anyway. City government business of any? Any city government business? Department reports?
On the city business, I talked to the mayor, remember there's some extra material on the Morgantown Road project. He suggested that we wait till we're done with Morgantown Road completely, maybe this material might be needed or not, and then we'll figure out what to do with it. That sounds good to the board.
Yeah, I guess I need to just see where it's at at the moment to get with, it'll be all right with the board, get with Bill Jones, just see where it's at on each yard or wherever it may be.
Yeah, I don't think.
If it's needed for the first phase, we'll use it, if not, then we'll.
You're saying we get with the city. We get with that one. Surely it's stuff we can use between the two of us.
Let me get a clear understanding. Uh, I'm rather say, see where it's at. Do that material need to be on one of our yards, still a contractor's yard?
Yeah.
Since it belongs to the city and the county?
Mr. Ford, do you know where it's at? The material, is it at, still at the supplier, or is it at Mr. Jones? I mean, where is it? It is it, okay.
So I'm just asking the question.
So you want it either us or the city, is what you're saying, you think it needs to be, and others could. If it needs to be used on the job, we need it where it can be handy if they need it.
Do y'all think this?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Otherwise, we're not, we're not ever seeing you. You were trying to say it. Go ahead.
All right, I got something to say, I'm gonna say it. I ain't gonna try to see it, I'm gonna say it.
Uh, just a couple of things. Burke Road, the flats have been completed, and so we submit that to the surveyor. While I can fish, as well as with York Road, we did have to get a right one, so those sites have also been completed. Um, the same thing for Care Road, uh, D W P to Care Road sites, probably inside of Care Road, so we're finishing up the flats with that. The Patrick Rule was completed in N R C that, so. Morgantown Road, contract asked a question as it relates to the DB participation for that project. I see on here, you need to put for clarity. Asked a question about the DB participation in the project, and basically gets federal guidelines that no longer require the DB participation. And so as a result of that, that had been removed from the project, and so that could not be removed to get the proper signatures before today, which was supposed to be today for the bid opening for Morgantown Road. So as a result, M D I asked, it's conversation being not removing the bid opening for Morgantown Road back to December the first at ten o'clock. Allow us to use the proper end in place to the process that the L P A required to be done. In normal process, I can just generate an addendum and send it to the B A plan holders, but this requires signatures from the board president, the project director, as well as approval from M D I before submitting that to the contract. So I'm requesting authorization to allow, just the project director, Miss Brandon, to leave the signed addendum request for the M D I project, so that we can send out this addendum to the contract.
You heard your final move. Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Mr. Gaines, do you have any idea of when we first got that money?
When we first got it?
Yeah. Do you write?
For the whole project?
Nah, the two point four, we just dealing with the two point four. Scott, do you have an idea when we got that money?
The money for?
Two point four million dollars we got from federal.
Where we have that money?
Do you have any idea when we received the money?
We were received it?
Yes, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
About twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Thank you.
All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries.
Question I have relates to signatures and authorization to, for signatures. Is, is it possible for me to get a blanket authorization to allow the work?
I know.
So go ahead, Fitz.
I just wanna be able to, cause I don't wanna get to a time where I can get in the future, and I have to wait to come back from the board to get a signature, and that document just be signed, sit on the table. That's what I'm asking for relates to Morgantown Road project.
Yeah, he's got authority to sign as soon as you get it.
You don't need no most?
No, cause he's already, that's what we did the last, what we just approved him to do, isn't it?
Well, that was just for that document. So I just wanted to.
You wanna do a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines, to, to sign any, present, sign any documents on that addendum, future addendum. All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries.
Uh, I mean, the contract is working on equipment road as well as Churchill Road, uh, for the D W P to turn on Morgantown Road right now. And we're seeing some riots going on Morgantown Road, page two that we just completed, so we're gonna reschedule the, the fountain at some point. Any questions, folks?
Go ahead.
Is there any progress made on M C W I grant? Cause they keep calling me wanting to know if we're gonna use those funds.
The H T D document is removed from the provided, you would hope to, you definitely go bring it up, building, I think I could, y'all, put the authorization from me. You know, y'all could buy some equipment or something like that, but they didn't see that y'all. Put a long, long project that was approved for. I thought you were in the communication with y'all after that.
I have been in communications, but I thought, we, when, the last time I'd ask, I thought I had understood that we were moving it to another project.
Right, and so that communication thing, thing between you and the horn, y'all, that was.
Okay, so are we gonna use this funds? Cause they, they, what they want is to know if we're gonna use the funds or not, if we're not, they wanna put it back in the pot for next year.
What, uh, what can be used for?
I have no idea.
This isn't where we're gonna try to buy a piece, piece of equipment or anything, this is actual.
That is why the project was moved, maybe because you got moving forward toward buying equipment.
Buy a skid steer.
But it wasn't a bunch of money though, was it? Yeah, thirty, forty thousand, I'm gonna say, so yeah, that's what we were talking about when we were over there, when we was having problems here, we'd move, went over to the city, and that's when they brought it up.
Did you buy a skid steer?
I just bought a.
Do, do you have a brush for it and?
Say again?
Do you have a brush for it? Can you, like, brush roads with it?
Yes, yes.
You already got all the implements?
I, I know I need one more piece, but I've got two pieces for it. I got a grapple and a six foot cutter, and we've used it.
But you, but you used a brush or something, couldn't you buy, couldn't you buy something like that one?
Correct, for that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll get it for you then. That answers that question, okay. And then, go ahead, go.
No, just a piece of patch.
It's just a patch.
We just need that.
They'll pray for the test.
You be, thank you.
And then we received the C O forty-five project, uh, reimbursement, but I have not seen C O forty-four. Is, then that, go ahead.
So, so C O forty-four, we submitted that months ago, and so I know they were looking for a document, and this page actually sent that document over to Ms. Beverly at N R C. So I like to call and check and see if they're ready back for that final financial report, and we did submit that document. Give two documents, they were looking for, no submitted back, I'll leave it in July, September, I have to look back at it today.
Okay, all right.
Is that all you have, Mrs. Gaines?
I, I got a question. Is there a deadline on that grant?
Um, with the one that I asked about first? Yes, September next year.
Uh, I ran into a guy, contractor Dane Garner, and he doesn't understand why he can't start that project or what, on the railing on Foster Mount Road?
Cause we asked, asked him, so I reached out to W S Instruction, Dozer, I've asked for Adwood, and I've also asked Millway. And so none of them were willing to provide a quote, they don't work, be on the project. Adwood said they don't have time to be on the project. I'm not sure what the next step is, y'all gonna allow this one quote to be accepted if it was under that threshold or not?
I don't remember how expensive it was. Does anybody probably remember?
He should provide a quote, a quote, less than seventy-five thousand dollars.
Legally, what can we do?
You need two written quotes if it's between five and seventy-five, and if it's less than five, then if you can't get two, what do you do? You can't sign, don't sign.
That's, that's.
Less six months, now we've been waiting on this.
Yes.
I, that portion has arrived before, and I call state authorities, and they say we have to pass, you have to keep going with it. Um, you know, in the United States, you said to all, I asked that before, they don't have, let you know about support. I mean, where do you wanna be at home, if you said?
So that work is specialized, really there's only one company that does Adwood, so most of your bridge contractors, they would do all the bridge work when we come to their river, they're gonna sub the Adwood. So it's an Adwood.
There was something funky about the new bridge patterns for bolting up railings, that they changed the boat hole pattern or something? So one of them's gonna have to be, a couple of them gonna have to be drilled in there, is that, is that the way?
Yeah, they've changed it. We took one piece, and we had.
No, they can get those pieces, so they, it's a specialty, special piece, or somebody's gonna have to sit there for about ten hours trying to drill a hole through six or eight inches of concrete, and, and maybe that's why they don't wanna do it.
Did Adwood say they didn't wanna do it?
Maybe they don't have, they don't have time.
So you just have to have another bid?
They have to have one more quote for it.
Who did it, who, you have one foot, quote already?
General by the name of Gardner, I think it's Logan Gardner.
Dane, Dane Garner.
Uh, Mr. Gardner submitted one. I didn't have a second. I just figured I can't get a second.
He, he also wanted to bid on the project, boy, the paper mill, and he, he said he can't get, you know, he can't get the, who's supposed to send him? If he contacts you, do you send him the, the spec?
If he, he sent me an email, and I talked to, uh, I got a sorry email this morning.
Oh, you did?
I did, I did respond to him. You just, you submit, so we supposed to, we supposed to call him, and Mr. Gardner has my cell phone. And they called me and tell me the one set of plan, I'll tell you what needs to be done, and I'll send you the stuff.
Well, I was worried about Foster Mount Road, cause that, that thing is kinda dangerous there, with no guardrail whatsoever. Somebody go off that creek, it's gonna be bad.
What I can do is, I can ask one of these contractors to just give me.
We're just talking about it. We'll get it. We're gonna get it. I gotta go now.
Okay, you, you gonna take it?
I gotta go.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything else? Um, where are we on, like, the Kingston Road project, what we're gonna do with our, um, extra money for the road projects?
So my understanding with Kingston Road, we can do about a little over two miles with the amount of land that we, that was put out there for the last time. Two and a half miles with trench wiring, the paving, striping, and signs.
And what's this?
That's continued, that's just based on the price that I have. I'm not, I can't guarantee with the country.
Okay.
And what, what funds are we talking about? The road bond fund? What fund?
No, I, I said aside at four hundred eighty-five thousand, plus we're gonna add it to, uh, each of us have, what, eight or nine hundred thousand? I, I, I understand that, I understand that, but this is more of this.
I know what you're saying, but we, we do it at the whole part of the road.
But what section?
But I, I haven't done anything in, in my district.
Yeah, I understand.
You told me that both of them you said out there, offer money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you tell them what section of Kingston Road follows the skyline to what we can do?
So you asked me to look at starting six one to go farther than two, so.
Yeah, okay.
On six one, it's about somewhere around two and a half miles.
So that would take you to Ogden Road or?
I can remember the intersection there.
Two and a half miles, you said?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And that'd be five in the, paving?
If you wanna, maybe add another foot over five and a half.
Where it needs to be, yeah.
And the end here relates to the horizontal, we have to request some exemption funds, which we've done in the past on some projects.
So what needs to be done to get that project? Going?
Um, that would have to get the board's approval to allocate the, I mean, stay there time to allocate to the project. As far as the additional funds that you mentioned that you have, and then give us authorization.
Didn't, didn't we do that last time, or about a month ago?
Not for the.
First, nine hundred thousand, the stay date, four hundred eighty-five.
That was, what was given to me last time was authorization to determine how much, how far we could go. And so I'm not sure that it's been assessed on the amount stated funding we allocate to a project.
Is, is Kingston a part of stay date?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think we discussed, I, I'm pretty sure we made a motion, cause he said he should have admitted.
It's not a sin.
You're saying no?
No, I said I think so.
I think, I'm pretty sure. We, we already passed that. Do you want to? Do we need to do it? Do we need to make a motion to make sure, or just like, looking about it? Do you remember it?
Yeah.
Okay, I know if y'all remember this. Yeah, okay. You got anything else?
So y'all, y'all giving me authorization to generate the program form, y'all, uh, the amount, money to, I want to declare on my person while you get.
Yeah, do you need a motion for that?
If I'm gonna be generating program for.
Okay, I'll make the motion. You wanna do this in discussion or?
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
You want me to say, I say.
Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Discussion.
I know we got the offer file, and it's gonna be some additional money to be added. And it's not determined yet how much additional money will be, so we need to know the additional money that's gonna be added to that, where he should know how flood to run this out.
Oh, it'll be in the motion with nine, about nine hundred thousand. To nine hundred to a million, plus the four eighty-five. Oh, it'll be in the motion with nine, about nine hundred thousand, to nine hundred to a million, plus the four eighty-five.
You say additional, that, that compensate?
Yes. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carries?
Alright.
Look, question while you're here, how much state aid funds was there, please?
Uh, probably about four point, four point three, I got to figure out what's represented.
Suppose you came on the plane.
Yeah, I, I want to say, I just wanna make sure again, you did, we're running out.
Yeah, it's helping us together, people have a plan to.
And we have a lot of money in that group.
Keep in mind that four point three.
And we need to know that number for sure from him, so you get that number from him.
No, no, four point three is available, you have to back out twelve percent of your money, so, and it'd be four point three minus twelve percent, that's just the state aid.
Minus twelve percent. Okay, and then the additional, this ain't for you, this is for Mr. Slub, I think, Scott, do you have a total on the, what we left in the road line?
It was like nine hundred thousand.
Well, I, we need to get a total number, I think it's fluctuated from five to nine to. I'll give with Mitzi. Thank you.
Yeah, because we came up with nine, you and I, we were saying five, but the last time we saw it was nine.
Yeah. I know, yeah. It was a number of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Hi, we, we got anything else for Mr. George?
Stay nine.
Thank you.
I think you are.
Next.
One more, Adams County, nine one one, this fact, I wanna give the, miss the calls from, uh, November the first until today, MPD had four sixty-nine, National Fire Department had twenty-four, Adams County, SO had thirty-two. Also, I've got one more other thing, I'm trying to see if we can revisit the CAD system, which that would miss that, maybe we missed that, how about CAD where we need to contract sign and move forward?
I, I've got any numbers, I'm not sure.
Okay, but you're coming up with any at all?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Listen, I rode out to the new building the other day, and the power source going to the keypad on the gate.
The wires, that's laying there?
Yeah, why isn't it laying on concrete?
I was supposed to come back and dig a trench, she said, because the batteries they keep putting in there was going down, I didn't even know it had that.
That cable on concrete's gonna last about a week.
Yeah, when he's coming back, he said to dig the trench, to put the wire in, I didn't know if he went back or not, but.
Has he been paid?
Yes.
Who did that?
He had, he had batteries in, Natja Spanson, uh, Richard White, he put the batteries in the keypad, but the batteries kept going down, so, I, I told him I didn't know it was batteries, I thought it was, uh, electricity going to it, so he said he was running it later, through there. So he ran the wire, and he said, oh, come back and dig the trench.
Could you call him and tell him?
Yes, I'll call him.
That needs to be done?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next. Don't be shy, folks.
Laying on top of that.
This is a morning. I'm saying, I'm Adams County sanitation, I just wanna give my monthly report, um, we bill about five thousand eight hundred and forty-two bills this past month, uh, this month, and we totaled accounts posted about ten thousand two hundred and five. So we picked up a lot of delinquent accounts, a lot of them that were in arrears from years ago, so, that, that's my report.
Okay, i- is the system working where people are calling in for complaints, cause I'm still getting a lot of complaints?
The system's working, they're not, they're not using the online, but they are calling in.
Oh, are you getting many complaints?
Not really, about, averaging about five, six.
Okay.
Good morning, Board, Mary Kay Gory, I was trying to eat pork, we have, uh, just wanna get, uh, permission and on the minutes first to apply for the Edward Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grants. It's one we've had before in the past, uh, it ended on June of the twenty-five, and they are just now putting out the, um, RFP for, um, funding again, this, this actual, this grant helps with our drug court grants, both of them, it assists us a- assists us in providing our services for both our drug court grants, currently it was Fund one thirty-two, it is due December fifteenth, so I just want permission to write this grant again, it's been a minute, and then I plan to be at the next meeting with everything for it to be signed, so.
Okay, you heard the request, moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Ms. Gaines, any discussion, all in favor, aye, any names, motion carries?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The highest purchase court for Adams County, I would like to spread the October procurement credit card and travel credit card across the minutes for approval.
Heard the request, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion, all in favor, aye, any names, motion carries?
Secondly, I would like to ask for permission to advertise for one year debris removal expired February first, twenty twenty-six.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second, taken by Mr. Gaines, any discussion, all in favor, aye, any names, motion carries? Okay, have you, uh, got a chance to look for playground equipment for, uh, Kingston, you know, all mine was destroyed when a tree fell on it?
Did you tell me anything about?
I, I've mentioned it several times, but I, I haven't seen what, what's available, uh, y'all, I know you used to have a book.
Yeah, Shaquille has it, and I'll get with her because they let her continue with that, so I'll follow up with it, I asked her about.
Yeah, Mike, Robbie might can make the decision, he knows what was out there, and what we can put back, with the room we have out there.
I'll get the book from Shaquille and get with you then, alright.
Alright, and we'll, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Support Allen, Allen from Adams County, uh, Deputy, Adams County Deputy Director, um, I would, we don't, we don't have any requests as of right now, um, but I would like to share with you all, um, first, um, that we will be conducting our annual full-scale exercise, it will be held at Natja's High School as well as ACCS, December the eleventh at eight thirty. For active shooter, the active shooters for one, the second thing I have is, our office is preparing for any severe weather, um, and we be, we're encouraging residents to put a plan in place, uh, as well as sign up for hyper reach, um, the way that they'll sign up for hyper reach is, they can visit our county website or contact the office. The third thing I have is, the outdoor warning signing project is still waiting on some approvals as well as funding, the fourth thing is working on the remote activation of our cell phone with the vendors. Hopefully, we will have that capability by December the fourth, and that's all I have for you all. Maybe push the confirm.
Good morning, Board. Same minor veteran service officer for Adams County, um, I have a couple things, uh, talking to you guys about, uh, first, the turkey drive will go as, as scheduled, and was planned, uh, everything's in place. After turkeys and everything, so, uh, I pick them up on that morning, all that's already been done. The second thing is, uh, I gave you a flyer for Reach Across America.
Okay.
Uh, the lady that was supposed to speak, she, she's feeling ill this morning, so, just maybe if I was there for, and I think, uh, county normally donates enough for a hundred reals.
And then we have appropriation for it.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we, we do an appropriation, and it goes to, it's certain, certain ratings, it can only go onto, and that's how we go on it.
That's all I have.
Alright.
And, and then, usually we do a reservation, and try to pick out a veteran or, or somebody who might want honors, if y'all wanna think about that, we can have it next meeting. Yeah, that'll be our, probably our last meeting of the year, so.
And to get the turkeys, they gotta bring an ID card, or they be two fourteen?
Uh, D fourteen, uh, their VA ID card, and they have to have the driver license with them.
Okay.
Uh, to ensure that there are Adams County residents, uh, this is only for Adams County residents, veterans.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Board.
I have a few games this morning, um, I don't know, uh, Mr. Slub, what's that, that, um, UK light up here for one forty-six, uh, real fast.
Yeah, it's been two weeks.
One forty-six more counts, I'm, yeah, we had a hearing last meeting.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And you were gonna, it needs to be cleaned by today.
Yes, sir. I went by this morning, my wife worked, took pictures, Ms. Hutchins had a certain area.
And then also, you were gonna talk about the building too, so.
And, and I looked, and, you know, y'all asked about moving it or destroying it or whatever, it is no windows and no doors, it is, uh.
And it's in a neighborhood, I mean, it's kinda in a neighborhood too, guys.
A ball hole. But it's, it's, it's no way the county far, the axle's up, y'all, I'm looking, I think it's two or one hundred, it takes about four to five axles, nobody, it's that big, so, so I don't know what direction y'all will go there, but it has not been cut any clean, for sure.
Okay, so, for the grass, I believe, two weeks is more than a reasonable time to have cleared that lot, that needs to be, or needs to find that and authorize them to, to do the cutting, and then for the building, you can have it removed after giving them a reasonable time to remove it, and we don't know, that was the question that we had, you know, what was the cost, and to, how much time would you need to move it?
Well. Well, moving it, the sound like's gonna be real fun, what about burning it and picking up the green?
Well, you know, the instructors there by far is residents, I would say right there headed, uh, he's a big baby, pulled out, just tore it out and haul, haul, I mean, the board order just to do that, I could just
You donation?
Just wanna get around them, you know, we're gonna work by the axle, whatever, to carry it out, and, or move it that way, probably, that's what she called it, tracking.
I'm not just crunching up with a escalator.
And then get the feed back to that, now our time.
Okay, what is reasonable about the time to give them to move it?
I don't know, I just wonder, so, Scott. Scott, excuse me, I'm sorry, I was asking, so, when we go in there, if we was to, had it counted down, uh, there's no, uh, repercussion liability for us if they tear the property down?
I mean, no, cause we adjudicated, had a menace to health and safety.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, just.
So we gotta give them what, another month or so for, for that part of it?
Again, I mean, I, I don't have any practical knowledge of doing any of that stuff, it really is practically, how much time would it take for somebody to get rid of that reasonably, is, is what the statute teaches, a reasonable amount of time. Cutting grass, I think two weeks is pretty reasonable, you know, taking that thing down or whatever, you might need more time, I just.
I, I would give them a month to take it down, a month, they could, and within a month, they could do it.
Okay.
Further than a year.
So, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Further than a year. Just do that big six week, or whatever from now, whatever may be.
Yeah, could y'all be back on January, uh, what, fifth?
Right.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah, approximately.
Yeah, we'll tie y'all in, then, hold it over.
So, what do we do about the grass, do we go ahead and cut the grass?
Yes, you can go ahead and cut the grass, okay, and then the next, the next meeting, he would have the cost, and we can adjudicate that cost and penalty, if we will, if, if it's the board's desire on to.
Okay. So you want me to see how long it'll take us to have, to tear it down, and I'd like to set up, how many loads would be, I'd just give you estimate of what the tipping fees will be, you know, as far as that, try it.
So let me ask you a question, Scott, when you sent out the note, notice to him, uh, was that part of it?
You don't have to, I was going to, just so.
No, no, I'm asking, I know we sent out a notice about the grass, so did that same notice take care of tearing the building down also?
Yes, sir, it specifically addressed the building and saying we're gonna remove it at your, your.
Okay. Alright.
But I, but to answer your question, I still try our best, as we always have, to try to get the proper, or any compliance.
Yeah, he can't look at it, let it pop, Robbie?
Yes, ma'am.
Those dog rooms.
Ma'am.
What was dog rooms' name?
Um.
Uh, Rosalyn Newman.
No, no, um, give me a minute, let me think, I, I do know.
Don't worry about it, Rob, we'll get it later.
Okay, but I do know, I'm trying to think of her name, I got it now, you want it?
That was fast.
You want it?
That was fast.
Alright.
Write it down, I'll get it after me. That was quicker, Rob, go ahead of.
Well, I'm.
That was fast.
You, 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 you do it a bit quicker than me.
Alright, I gotta run after him, we'll get it now, aight, so I'm a boy, you could, that what you said, Mr. Slub?
Yep.
Alright, alright, next thing I have is, uh.
We do then.
The motion finding, the red flags.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion, all in favor, aye, any names, motion carries?
Okay, I have three new hires, two were starting November nineteenth, uh, Jamie Morgan, which is a truck driver, C D L, laborer, uh, his pay will be fifteen fifty, after six months it'll go to sixteen fifty, that's thirty-two, two forty, a year. The next one is Ashbury Stevens, he's an operator, laborer, uh, his pay, he'll start leasing, I mean, November the nineteenth, his pay will be fifteen fifty to sixteen fifty, thirty-two, two forty. And I have, uh, Alonso Bernard, he's gonna be a mechanic, a mechanic helper, at fifteen fifty, go to sixteen fifty, his is at thirty-two, two forty, he will start onward before, uh, December fifth.
Okay, heard the request.
Some more.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion, all in favor, aye, any names, motion carries?
That's all I have, other than what we discussed, getting material from Mr. Jones to county or city property.
Alright, anybody got anything for Mr. Don?
That's all I have, unless y'all have something.
What do we have on ten racklers, Rob?
Ten racklers, I went by last, week before last, and spoke with him, he's working, but it's, the fence is still down, you know, it was up, and then it fell down, he had stuff, the fence is still down. I did talk to him when I went by, and told him that the board is not playing this time, but, you know, something's gonna be done, you know, we just, so, he said he's working at it, but it's, it was him and two more that were working it, but it is a bunch of tires out of the road, probably making truck haul two hundred fifty, sixty tires, it's probably definitely outside the rip, at least a lot.
Is, is he still adding to them?
He's still collecting them?
Yes, they're making their rounds as well as I'm making my rounds too, you know.
Yes, he is, he's, he's got good business going on, he's in profit.
He is, and he's not, and don't worry, I, I'm just gonna be, and I told him that, I said, I work to do the best I can, and I am, you know.
Was he involved in that deal I called you about Friday?
I'm waiting to, I'm looking, trying to read it now, to see, I, I don't, I don't know if it was him directly, but he did it directly, so, I can't give a, uh,
He just don't.
Actual assurance on that. He, he don't, and, so, just, just form it.
It's a group.
Something we got to do, something about.
Is there any way we can tie this back to the tire people conflicted, I, I know, I know the two that are doing it, the motions, how, how do we tie it back to them?
That's what he's looking at, I got a call Friday, and there was a big fire south, and there was a pickup truck that pulled up, a truckload full of tires, thrown them in the fire, Sheriff Department was called Friday.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call D E Q again, and see, can we get them to go ahead and step up and help us with it, alright.
I, I thought we, I thought out last time it was to go ahead and take care of this situation, cause I made a motion to go ahead and take.
Well, I asked to talk, I think it was two weeks, and that was it, don't come back.
Yeah.
That's right.
And every, I went, like you said, not last week, we.
Mr. Cracker, it's up, it ain't.
Yes.
I don't know, I guess I may be wrong, but, uh, pretty much all of the people inside the city limits. pretty much all of the people inside the city limits is the ones that deal with the tires. I thought the city supposed to have something, uh, ordinance in place where, uh, just like you tell them in the house, you gotta get a permit, and you got to show where you're gonna go dump this stuff at. I thought they supposed to have same, same kind of, uh, deal with the tires.
Think they do, there's just no, they're not even doing the documentation, that the EQ's not gonna back it up, we can't do anything about it, right?
I just think these companies need to be held accountable for who they're, uh, giving these tires to and allowing these people to, uh, take them for their private property.
They're not giving them to them, they're selling them to them, or paying them to take them off.
They paying them to take them off, 'cause I don't think a dude can afford to buy no tire.
They paying them.
So, they, it, the only way we gonna alleviate the problem, we got to start where the problem started. The problem started with these businesses, and, and I know the individual is dead wrong, but if businesses wasn't giving him the tires, then he couldn't be taking them to my private property.
I don't know what we're paying now, six dollars a tire, uh, if you change a tire out, you, they charge you six dollars to take your bad tire. He's paying them too, to haul them off, so he's making four dollars every, every time he, uh, gets rid of a tire, so, there's the incentive.
Well, maybe they need to have some cameras over there where we can see who doing, what business is doing then.
Alright, you got anything else, Mr. Don? Alright. Sheriff, I guess it's you.
It's me.
I'll be right back, I'm gonna go over to my boy, like. If you ever be the weekend, have, you know, see the next, if you ever be the weekend. But before I get to any of that, we'll get to take care of the business at hand. Uh, first thing I wanna do is congratulate A C C S for making it to the championship game, I believe it's this Thursday, three o'clock in Jackson, they the championship. A C C S Division Two championship was gonna be at Jackson, thinking Jackson Academy, that's what they gonna be doing.
Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday, three o'clock.
Can you tell me about that?
Wait, I got to my, I guess I'm giving it to you before, I just wanted to congratulate them on, you know, other way to see, you know, despite all the interest and things they had, you know, on the team. I also want to congratulate National Marching, Marching Band, Hats, uh, Marching Band, well, they went out to Texas, out to some part of Texas and actually won a battle of the bands. Those young people have been over there day and night practicing, I've seen them when I figured out my track practice. They've been marching up and down that field practicing, and they went out there to Texas and actually won the Battle of the Bands, so that's a lot to be, a lot to be proud of, that's on proud of them guys. Also wanted to say thank you to supervisor Gray and supervisor Gaines showing up to the neighborhood watch. You know, it means a lot to those people, those people have been consistent, since I've been sheriff almost nine years now, coming to those neighborhood watches, and, and we're trying to get more participation in it. Since COVID has hit, trying to get people out, just like churches, trying to get people back to churches too, it's, it's the same thing with neighborhood watches, but, you know, considering all that happened, being more, we need neighborhood watches now more than ever, but I just wanted to say I appreciate you two supervisors showing up. And will that the other supervisor know, oh, you, uh, when we coming back there, we said, well, now, uh, supervisor Wilson and supervisor Milton, what these two supervisors did, they changed the one. I think it worked for you all, you two, y'all choose to do that as well, you know, next thing we have, making folks out, show up, you know, ice out and sit, maybe, just about, just about. I do have some, I do have another, some requests for pay, uh, pay changes and, and new hires. I talked to, we talked to Ms. Con and been approved by H R, so y'all won't be reading, y'all won't be reading, but I'm sorry, I was wrong, ten minutes third, wanna hire him, you hire a certified, it's sixteen eighty-one hour. Did, did he retire?
No.
This is summer. Oh, okay. This is summer. Okay. This is summer. We do, we did have, I do also want to congratulate our, we had our second jails slash corrections officers, of course, the second one we had, and I'm proud to say now that all of our corrections officers are certified at our county sheriff's office. That's a huge thing, we, we hadn't had fully certified jail staff since before COVID, you know, and a, a lot, a lot of reasons why, but, now, after two classes, we are certified, and I appreciate, I want to say I appreciate, uh, the Clayton County Sheriff's Office, because, it was because of their participation in this, that we were able to have enough people to hold this second class, to make sure that we had all of our people certified and theirs too as well. But, I'm back on the page, with that being said, you know, we put it in place that once they get certified, they can get two dollar raises. And so the names are, uh, Rashana Connor, who's going to sixteen oh six an hour, Robert Irvin going to sixteen oh six an hour, and Ori and Bowie going to sixteen oh six an hour. Alright, alright, and the last one that I have, we had two people resign at the sheriff's office.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Got a question.
Yes.
Uh, they got, they just got certified, you're saying?
They've been working there, but they didn't get the raise when everybody else, and, and what was put in place was that they couldn't get the raise when the rest of the county did it, even though we budgeted for it. And so they just got certified, so we put in place that once they get certified, they can get their two dollars.
And these are deputies?
No, these are jails.
Oh, they're jails.
No, these are jails.
Okay, okay, okay.
So that's what that is, so they, they receive their certification now.
Cause I, I, I was thinking, jails, uh, within, what did that started, if they making sixteen oh six, uh, but they jails, okay, okay.
Alright, finish on Paul Rose? Yeah, on Paul Rose, like I said, we had two people resign, was open up some positions, so I needed to change his service to twenty-two seven one thirty, now, he's gonna be a supervisor now. He's sorry, he was trying to promote it, he's sorry. Alright, you heard my question?
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion, all in favor, uh, any nays, motion carries? As you all know, a lot has happened this weekend, I mean, we seen a lot this weekend, and, and that's again, that's why I'm glad that I see the, the sheriffs and the chiefs combining, trying to get the state to rethink that thirty-five year retirement when it comes, law enforcement, um, doing his profession for thirty-five years, and one of the reasons we saved it way too long is because of the wear and tear on your body and the wear and tear on your mind. And this weekend showed that, because we've had two fatal accidents that happened within the city and the county of Adams County, city accidents. We had a murder that we seen, had found a lady that was, uh, deceased, and you had two other people get shot this weekend. That's a lot of trauma to, to see as law enforcement officers, so, as they fight with, with, as they have spirited conversations with legislators, I certainly hope you all getting that, what's your opinions as well, saying that it doesn't need to be a thirty-five year retirement? Cause going out this weekend, responding to all the stuff, trying to help the city out, responding to our homes, I can honestly say I seen the toll on our faces this weekend, what they saw. Some of these people had never seen dead bodies before, and never encountered some of the things they did, and I could see the weight on some of their young shoulders, and that just weighs heavy. But then being said though, there's a lot that needs to happen in our community, we definitely need a mindset change and some ears, and it's not just law enforcement who needs to do that. You know, anytime you go out there and you're talking to victims, and the parents are telling you, telling them not to talk to law enforcement, um, we gonna handle it ourselves, that's a lot, and then the same, got the same vows coming that y'all need to do something for, we do something, again, you're telling them not to share information. That is hard, heavy, heavy on law enforcement, and so that's why I, I started thinking about some things, praying about some things, so, what can we do to help these situations in these terrible areas? You know, we have certain places that have been here for thirty years, forty, fifty years plus, and some things have never changed, you know. You have some, I commend Holiday Department, and I'm calling them out specifically, because I do commend them for trying, and we asked them to do a project, and they did. They, uh, they're trying to get more cameras now that's on the world, they put up a privacy fence, and yet, you know, there are people who are living there still being assaulted, shot, attacked on great places. And we know where it's coming from, it's coming from, you know, from the other side down into out of the heights, and they're coming through the woods, and they're shooting the people over there, and of course, this college has it for measures to take place. So what I'm not asking, what I'm suggesting, and what I'm asking the board to do, is to give the city board, and can we please put some ordinance in places to make these apartment complexes get on board with, with improvement as security measures? Right now, you got half of the apartment complexes over there, but some, with the, some of the cameras working, some of them not. You got the other half that everybody is fully aware of, that they know is a kill zone down there, because they got no cameras, and anytime a shooting happens, people are either running to there or running from there. People are either going down in that section, uh, and I, what is it, Cambridge Heights Supervisor Gray, that, at the bottom?
Cam.
Cam, Cambridge Heights. And I'm calling names intentionally, because I wanted to see it in the paper, I'm calling names today, Cambridge Heights, as long as I've been there, they've only had one camera, and everybody knows. To me, um, you're not doing your due diligence as an apartment complex, or, or business owner, to help ensure the safety of the citizens. Everybody down there got that, but some people are in situations where they really can't help get themselves out of at this time. And that's why I'm asking the boards to step up and put some pressure on these apartment complexes, and have these people, put an order in place, city, what county, I don't care which one it is, both, both need. Where they have to put some security measures in place, for these people to get cameras or something, because on one side, you got people not wanting to talk to us. You also have people afraid to talk, and they have legitimate concerns. Everybody know what, nobody wants to talk about it, but I'm talking about today, you have officers who they feel like are dirty, and you have some using the word dirty, and I was saying it publicly, because it has to be addressed. And that's a legitimate concern for people when they feel like they give information, then it comes right back out to the streets, and then they get shot up because they're shit. Me personally, I wish there was no civil service in place, and that's I'm saying this publicly today, I wish there was no civil service in place, because, you have people in chains or commands who want to do things to, to remove these elements, but they can't because their hands are tied. They don't have exactly what they need to meet the criteria for civil service to get rid of these people, unlike sheriff office, is that will employ. I'm saying this publicly, because my heart is heavy this morning, this, you know, last night, seeing what I saw in hospitals. And even with the mothers of these young people who got shot last night, sitting there saying, don't talk to their son, don't talk. I understood why they were telling them, don't talk, they were telling them, don't talk, because they were more afraid of what the street's gonna do versus what help they might receive in law force. And that's a legitimate concern, so, one of the things I wish would happen again is, when I started at, at the city, and I ain't calling E M P E I, I'm just trying to help them and tell them, air it out, what the issues are. They used to have housing authorities that were assigned to these areas, who got to know the people, who built the wall, who built the trust, got their name, and people were paid to view information. At this point though, you would need at least two housing officers in those areas to try to view what you give them, because you send one officer over there, they outgunned out, man, and I'm just gonna tell you. And I ain't nothing gonna happen, you need, you, there has to be some kind of neighborhood stable, restabilization projects that go on, to help change the mindset, and get some of those elements out of those apartments. I'm not gonna lie, when I seen Williams Apartments, aside, they were shutting that Williams Apartments down, I was so happy they did it, because that design worked years ago, this kill zone. And so, I'm glad, give me the housing, Madison Housing Authority credit for, they gonna tear those buildings down and deal with one store or apartment complexes, whatever they gonna do over there. But at that time, a lot murders were happening over there, just like it happening in Cambridge Heights right now. Madison Housing Authority went and put cameras up on the north end, on the part that they actually managed, and I'm glad they did that, because, their levels of violence and things that happened had went from here to here, I don't know who owns the property between Cambridge Heights and Holiday Apartment, but I really wish we would put some pressure on them to give us clear views of sight over in there, and if not, figure out what we can get in there to get our eyes in there, because, when we went over there to help the city yesterday, my K nine officers went, area the track, them into views all the way back to the pavement, back down El Cora Street. And I'm calling names, because we know the patterns, we know where you at, and I want people to know we coming for you. Next thing I'm asking the boards to reconsider is, put back out some money for Project Save Neighborhood. Y'all see what happened when we y'all had Project Save Neighborhood in place, and now y'all get this firsthand, what, what has happened since it happened, happened in place. So I'm asking you all to give it to the city, whatever, to reconsider putting that back in place to help get some of these things in order, because, last night, uh, the police chief called me, and I could hear it in the voice when she called, after the third incident last night, she called for help. And we got teammates last night, and we helped them shut the city completely down last night, but we have to get the boards, the communities, and everybody thinking of, on what really needs to happen. Is it time for a curfew to be put in place, and have, in the city of Madison County, balance to help to curb some of it? I don't have all the answers, I'm just bringing it up, because solutions need to be talked about and need to be, but I am hell been on the fact that there shouldn't be one single apartment complex in this community that has some kind of camera system on, here, here, and in those, in those areas where, that building funded, the building projects, I'm telling you all, they need to have, they need to have housing officers over there, seriously, they used to, you know, you ain't about to say, you know that program back in the day, but I know I'm not the only person who's as hard as it is, but I just wanted to share that with you all, we have to get to where we're building trust, and we have to get to where we're compact, we're combating that anti-stop snitching campaign that's been going on, but again, knowing what I know from the inside, I understand why people not talking to all law forces. I, I get it, and I say I get it, trust me, I get it, but I want you to know that if they don't want to talk to anybody else, they don't want to. I promise you, whether you feel like I like you, dislike you, whoever, one thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do my job, and you give us the information, I promise you, but I don't know. All I have. Alright, um, anybody got any questions for Sheriff?
Mr. President, I don't have a question, but, uh, Sheriff, I, I, I don't think, uh, civil service is, is gonna protect nobody that's dirty. And, uh, whatever, when, whenever, hopefully we don't have it, but whenever they find out that there's a dirty officer, they gonna have to do the same thing they did on North Mississippi. Maybe they need to bring, re- bring the F B I or whoever down here undercover to investigate some of this stuff, man, because what happened this weekend is, is, is blowing my mind. It, it's out of control, and everything you say is, is one hundred percent true, and even when I was with the city, Cambridge Heights didn't want no cameras, they didn't want security. They are a problem.
They are.
They are a problem, and, uh, the city need to do something about it, because people keep, they not safe. You know, uh, I don't know, I got relatives live down there, and, 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 um, it's a serious problem, and, it just seem like these people comfortable, as long as the crime is happening on a certain side of town, then, I mean, these people, like, everybody in this community need to be upset about what's going on, but as soon as that bully jumped the track, then all hell gonna break loose. And it shouldn't be like that in a community, all hell need to be breaking loose right now.
You, you had three apartment complexes that had shooting. You, you had three apartment complexes that had shootings this weekend and give some calling names because they need to. They, they have a duty as well as everybody else to address security. And as soon as we was having a shooting, they had Holiday Apartment, they had Cambridge Heights.
Can the city compel those, uh, subdivision, what do you mean, one apartment complexes to hire security?
That's a good question. That's a good legal question. I would have to ask a turn slow over there.
That seems to me like it'd be the first step is to our off-duty sheriff staff, these old police officers to watch and patrol that, that's those areas.
Those brothers, I'll be honest with you. They need those cameras bad and they need security, the police down there, but they need them cameras bad.
I thought we had authorized or got permission to get cameras for all those places. The, the, the blind spots, what happened with that? They wouldn't do it?
No, we got them for throughout the community, but certain, certain apartment complexes didn't own Project Nolo because of whatever reason they had, so they went with other systems.
And they're not helping.
And I would, I would say to anybody who gets it, please allow us to have remote access to it. We're not trying to watch people. We are trying to, we should take some precautions, stop some things and access.
All right.
And, and that's, that, that's, they private on, for one thing, Cambridge Heights doesn't have any.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying this publicly, there's been enough violence, there's been enough shootings, there's been enough murders to where if they need to be a lawsuit, then they need.
And are you finished here with your report?
I'm, I just, I'm headed right now because of that. So, yeah, I'm finished unless y'all have questions with me.
No, but I'm glad you brought that up because I, I have something that I was gonna bring up in my report and I didn't. Go ahead and bring it up because it relates to this also. Um, I talked to Scott about it too. I asked him to bring some information. Well, since all this is going on over in those, uh, Cambridge Heights, Maryland Heights and Holiday Apartment, Holiday Apartment cannot even go to vote.
Right.
Because it's over in Maryland Heights. The precinct is over in Maryland Heights. I've been getting calls about there when I'm out campaigning, doing my campaign, this has been going on for years, that they would not go and vote over there because
Move it.
they can't, that's, that, that's, that's my thing. That's what I'm gonna bring up. So I wanted to ask this board that, uh, I've moved that precinct, Maryland Heights, to Piggam Baptist Church. I've talked to, uh, Reverend, uh, Melvin White about moving and, and he says fine, he has no problem with it. But in order to get these people to vote, we're gonna have to move that precinct because they will not go over there. You know, that, that, that's, they call it, we not going in their territory.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I want to get that precinct moved. It's Maryland Heights, the precinct is in, and I wanna move it to Piggam Baptist Church.
All right, um, that's a motion by, you said, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? Any more discussions?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Just to be clear.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any names? Motion, Sheriff.
Uh, just to be clear, I'm asking regardless of what the city do for the counties to see if we can draft an ordinance requiring them to give videos available to these areas. I'm talking to county, I'm talking county departments. I'm just saying, y'all.
I don't have no problem with it. What, what we need to do? What we need to do?
Draft an ordinance?
Well, uh, I knew that we dropped the ordinance. I'm tired of.
All right.
The ones that have the videos right now, nor does he know he should have.
First by Mr. Gray to draft the ordinance, uh, put cameras in, in the county, uh, apartment complex. Second by Mr.
Oh, first of all, by the next question. I'm with Sheriff, I wanna make sure it's.
Any, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I, I, I'm gonna get your comments.
All in favor?
Uh.
Sheriff, I have a question about something. I don't know how we're gonna clear this up, but, uh, a lady called the sheriff's deputy for disturbing the peace thing out in McGrange. And, uh, when your officers got there, they arrested a lady, called the police because she had a so-called active warrant that was seven years old from a bad check of a hundred dollars. And they took a sixty-three-year-old woman on a cane with a cane to jail over a, a seven-year-old bad check that turned out to not even be a problem, but she got, I guess, stayed a nine years in jail and then went to Lincoln County. Uh, and I, I just, I do not understand why we arrested somebody over a hundred dollars.
The warrant is a warrant. It's contempt, of course, contempt, but it's not age discriminatory. And I can't say, well, the officer could have used judgment on that or not without knowing the situation. But this is the woman I'm thinking about. She misled, she was misleading in what she was saying too as well. And when they do, they did, they did their job. So I can't, you know, the warrant said you should take the body. It didn't say how. Well, they are just like, that's, that's really an officer discretion for me to really go in and I don't have to look at, look at the body cam and actually see what happened on it. Because it would have brought my attention. But I just, I am aware of a lady who did go to jail for some bad checks and gets sent to another county though, so.
This, this is one check for a hundred dollars. I don't know if we're talking about the same one.
Yeah, it could be. I, I don't know.
Oh, but she, she's just like, she, she can't, she can't hardly walk and she's in jail laying on the floor.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I, I'm not in disagreement with that and that's why we made our warrants public though. And we encourage the citizens to go online and look and see a good name on there and take your.
There's a, is there not a statute, uh, statute of limitations on a bad check? And this lady had overdraft, so it didn't make any sense whatsoever.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not telling the, the reason because we don't get that portion of it like that. We really don't get a lot of contempt of that. You know, whether the ticket was a check was whatever. And again, that is, that is officer discretion and officer judgment that should be used in a situation like this. I really don't wanna come to either way.
And, and it's not like she's going anywhere. Uh, she wasn't gonna run very fast. All right, thank you.
I appreciate it. Officer judgment though, it's indiscretion.
Public comments? Public comments? Any public comments? All right, coming to the table, Mr. Gray.
Well, Sheriff, there with the shootings, but Sheriff, I also believe that, uh, this is way bigger than just the Sheriff Department and the Police Department. I think everybody, it's time for everybody to just have a, a meeting and, and come together and make some decisions about some of these places, man, because it's actually endangering the health and the welfare of the people that live over there. Uh, excuse me, I wanna congratulate, uh, Tawana Wi- Williams for being, uh, Woman of the Year. What was that guy named with Man of the Year?
Johnny.
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 Johnny?
Johnny.
Uh, I wanna congratulate both of them and, uh, I wanna congratulate all the people that ran and, uh, won on November the fourth. I had no idea. And one of my good friends, uh, when I was with the city, he was the mayor of Hattiesburg, Johnny Dupree. He ran for, uh, legislature and he, he ended up winning. And, uh, I guess now he didn't have the city with the mayor, the county with the supervisor. And now he's in the state legislature, so I wanna congratulate him. And, uh, obituaries, it was kinda real, real hard for me when I seen Michael Pennington, uh, picture in the newspaper. To me, he's Mr. Walmart. And when you go to Walmart, I don't care where I may.
Really right, really right. Wow, wow, what you doing, really right?
And to pick up that paper and see him in that paper kinda did something to me, so my sympathy goes out to his family. Uh, it was a rough weekend, like the sheriff say. I had a, uh, family member to be buried in Atlanta and a classmate to be buried in Atlanta. My sympathy goes out to the Prophet and the Rowan family. The Davis family, the Turner family, if y'all notice, these lists just keep getting longer and longer. The Hunt family, the Griffin family, the Rollins family, the Nicholson family, the Diggs, the McGee, the Moore. And I was on my way from, uh, Martytown and I seen, uh, the police, Melvin Davis from the school district in all these cars. And I'm like, man, they got a parade going on? So they went to visit, uh, Ms. Patricia Jefferson. I guess she was an employee of the school or whatever the case may be because they had the whole middle school, all of them over there. They brought her her Christmas early. That's what I saw on Facebook. And the next day she passed. I'm like, wow. And my same cousin that passed in Atlanta, she went to that, I mean, her cousin went to the funeral and this lady is her grandmother, so she got a double murder. And, uh, I'm real upset about what's going on in our community. And the only way we're gonna alleviate this, everybody gotta come together. And, uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I think we need to, so can we get a committee from this board to go talk to a committee from the city and have the police chief and the sheriff together and come up with a plan to try to, uh, put an end to this. I know you can't put an end to it, but at least we can try. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Second.
I'm taking care of most of the, uh, things like the Maryland precinct in the, uh, one point six month of, uh, vote. Um, I also want to congratulate, uh, Ms. Tawana Williams and Mr. Johnny. So a good woman up here and a man up here. Uh, that's a big honor to them for them. Um, the next thing I have is I need to get approval for travel to August of the M S Board of Directors, uh, conference. And the travel will be reimbursed through December the eighteenth through the twentieth.
Move it on. First by Mr. Gray or, or was that a motion? Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries?
That's all, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gaines?
Yeah, I'd like to just, uh, say congratulations to the, uh, man of the year. And I think the program was really, really nice. I did go to the, uh, gala and it had a eightest theme. And, uh, I've been to a couple of them and I think that, that one was kinda the most exciting one. It was really fun. I think people had a really good time. And it's, and it's good to be able to see what our community is doing. But, um, and the other thing that I was, um, I don't, I don't really know, have a bunch of knowledge of it. I was kinda hearing of what was going on and I happened to step out with the shootings and, uh, yesterday I was roping and, uh, somebody got a call saying they did have a, a shooting over in Pride Dancing. I hadn't heard anymore and I get up this morning, here at the work and I hear it's been several more. But I know, but we did have the, uh, Save Neighborhood and I think, well, I know I'm right. It's like a week or a day or so after the Save Neighborhood ended, a shooting happened. And it's been shooting ever since, not because I remember it came here, so I don't know. And the money is tight everywhere, but I think we'll look, um, need to look and do what we can and I just don't know and I'm, you know, I heard Mr. Gray said that they need to get together with the committee. But I mean, and just my opinion as a supervisor, when things start getting out of hand and uncontrollable, you cannot be too proud to ask for other people to come in and help. If you already got stuff going on in the neighborhood, I mean, you know, I'll go beyond what supervisor Gray said. I think somebody do need to have a conversation. I know since I've been here five years, they have had several conversations with the sheriff, the, uh, police chief, not from the current, what I'm talking about from when we first came. But you got people I think that are willing to help. I don't know because I'm not a law enforcement, but I know you got Mississippi Bureau of Investigations, you got FBI, you got a lot of other people. And I think in some parts of Mississippi, like Jackson, uh, the Capitol Police, they did a task force because of all the murders. And if we have to get a joint effort for the saving people lives, that's what we need to do. I mean, regardless of what, because that's hard on the family. You don't know it until you sit in that seat. You don't know it until you got to walk up and identify one of your family members shot to pieces that you will never forget. You don't know it till you enter the courthouse, get with it, with it personally. And so I hate it for any family. It matters not to black, white, brown, purple. But what I did say, and I said it all the time, a murder or a shooting in Adams County, regardless of what end it's on, in statistics, it's wrote as Adams County. That's businesses we, we open and trying to open the airport. God bless us to get closer than we ever have. So we open the door for new opportunities. You have a tourism business that Adams County basically thrived on, uh, when the plants went down. How's that gonna look in statistics when that's just being one of the most of the dangerous places? So we gotta come together as a community and figure out what can we do. And, uh, so, you know, uh, I know it's tight here and I, and I do feel like if we need to, if it's any ways possible, we can see if we can do some of that Operation Save Neighborhood, uh, or come up with something to draw people out in their community. And I mean, it seems like, I don't know, it's gotta be a joint effort because thank God that we don't seem like we have many occurrences in the county. It's like most of it happening in the city part, the sheriff do do a good job, so somebody need to have a conversation. And just my opinion, we need to have some outside people in, some, some people who don't know nobody. Some people gonna come do their job regardless of who it is and, and try to save some of these lives because it's gonna be hard on some people to walk up to them funeral homes and everything else. So, you know, I, I, I don't know and, and it's hard on people to be like that. When you've been shot at, you're a victim, or stuff like that, it's hard on families. So my heart goes out to them and what we can do as officials, uh, to help that with the sheriff, the police chief and everybody so I'm not pouring fingers, but I'm saying it's time for the coming together. I yield my.
Mr. Middleton?
Sheriff, at one point we had made a little bit of traction in Cambridge. Did that just stall out?
It's, I ain't gonna say it stalled, but it's, it's.
It's not moving fast enough?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to revisit that.
I'll, I'll retell.
I think we need to revisit that ASAP.
Okay.
And need to be some action.
Um, you know, in the, in the seat I sit in, I'll do anything I can in my power to try to curtail any of this. And, and I, I agree with Supervisor Gaines and Supervisor Gray. It doesn't matter where it is, it affects all of us.
It does.
And, uh, it's sad, it, it's, it's traumatizing. Um, you, you even talk about, the gentleman Ricky talked about that worked at Walmart, known him a long time. And my wife sat there and said, you know, that when this happened the other night, eleven o'clock, my son had left the house to go drive somebody home who didn't sit at his house. But it could've been, you know, I mean, just, it hits home. I mean, accidents happen and, and you just don't know. But, uh, um, I'm on board to do anything we can as, as board supervisors to, to help move any of this forward and, and be in any meetings we need to be in, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
And I will make the, a phone call.
Please.
Um, I have one thing. Uh, Lynette West cannot make it today, so she asked me to take care of this. This is on Supervisor Wilson's applicant for the, um, ARPA Home Improvement, um, grant. And she needs approval to pay the last two invoices, which is their administrative fee. And she needs approval to pay the last two invoices, which is their administrative fees and inspection invoice. And then for Supervisor Wilson to sign the final call certification. So.
Move by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
That's all I have.
Brandon.
Um, I just have two items to spread across the minutes. Um, I have the tax recognition settlement for October to spread across the minutes, please.
Move by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
Uh, I received the um quarterly report on the mental health commitments uh received to House Bill sixteen forty. She could have that also spread across the minutes, please.
So move by Mr. Gaines.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sloane.
We had an addendum for the Trustmark lease purchase that needs to be approved. This was packed for the couple of different equipment for the grid department.
Move by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
Yeah, I sent an email several weeks back about our fees on the antenna ordinance. And I've spoken with our current contractor with it and they've got a new, I meant fee schedule for them. This would include cost that we have for the uh, for, for the consultant's work. And except we adjust it to that, should be in compliance with the law. Do you motion to approve those fees?
Move by Ms. I have second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Ms. Khan.
I have a budget amendment to the mental health to split the payroll between administrative and federal. I'll put it all on administrative. So.
All right, you heard the question. So move by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
I have a budget amendment for E nine one one. Um, the AT&T was two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And I'm gonna hit put a little more of a push here now because I know something else will come up. So I'm making an amendment for two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to E nine one one to finish off the building.
So move by Mr. Gaines. Second. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
I have a transfer from the general fund to the state insurance rebate um fund for a hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. Um, that's normally usually, it, it wasn't the general fund, so I moved it to the state insurance rebate. And then I moved it from state insurance rebate to the county fire fund. Um, just, I did that just to have a literature to show that it did go to the state rebate fund and then I made it into the county fund.
Okay. So move by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
Okay, so, um, missing back me an invoice for um recording equipment. The vendor wants fifty percent, or yeah, fifty percent down payment before they process the order and then repay the difference after, after the fact.
Yes, okay.
I'm just.
Yeah. How much is it?
We can't advance.
It's thirty-two thousand dollars.
We can't advance. Can't talk to you.
Okay, nothing to do about that, but because that's the law.
That's. And then I need to spread across the minutes and uh President Wilson's signing bill to sell to for um the motor grader. And then also I need to spread across a minutes the rental agreement for the motor grader that we currently have, which is eco dollars. And we are being allowed to use it until our new motor grader is, is um.
All right, you heard the question. Move by Mr. Gaines.
This is for sure to a buyback provision.
Yes, yes.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any, any needs, motion carries?
Uh, I, we've already approved this. I think this is supposed to be an exhibit. This is a copy of what was um submitted for the um strategic multi metal investments fund. Um, we approved it Friday. I think that's just an exhibit.
What's this?
That's the, uh, the grant we submitted, that we approved, we submitted it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Attach this to the, to the.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's exhibit. Okay. Um, so it's time for the sheriff's department to rotate out cars and order new ones. Um, they won't, they won't get here till probably March or April of next year. But it'll be eleven cars enterprise with the one of the purchase. And then they also will sell the ones that um we're turning in. And whatever is over the price that uh, that is the pre, the, the principal amount we get back. So it's a letting of yours.
All right, we don't really have a figure on that, do we?
Was that done with purchasing? Did purchasing approve that?
No, this is, I guess I thought we had a contract with Enterprise.
Not just like that.
Me.
Now I have, I have the interest rate quotes. Excuse me. I have, have the interest rate quotes.
Like a car for sheriff's fund.
The issue you have is a straight lease with Enterprise, which you legally can do, you just have to advertise versus lease purchase, which you just need two written quotes. That's always run into a problem with Enterprise.
Okay.
So what we have done in the past to do that, we advertised and we've gotten lease agreements with Enterprise. Done this in the past.
Okay, that's not what people, I misunderstood. I thought I just had to get the interest rates and we could do a lease purchase.
You can do a lease purchase, absolutely, with two written quotes. A straight lease, which is what Enterprise does, is different than a lease purchase.
So even if this, this is they're buying from the state contract, I still have to get.
As long as we're buying from them, that's okay. We're not though, if it's a lease. Leasing from.
We're not leasing from them.
Okay, that's what I.
No, we are not leasing from them.
Yeah, as long as you're not leasing from Enterprise.
No, they got set quotes on cars. And I, my recommendation is to do a lease purchase with Trustmore at three point nine percent because theirs was seven percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is perfectly fine.
So we.
Yes.
We are buying the cars. And it's okay to lease, you just have a different procedure.
I, I, I.
And Enterprise has seen this up before in the past on that.
Yeah, so I, I did, I'm asking about the cars from the state contract and doing a lease purchase for Trustmore.
How, how many cars is it?
Eleven.
Okay. And where's the funds go from?
I have a budget. I, I have them all planned.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need a motion?
Three point nine.
Move by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Ms. Gaines. Any discussion?
Uh, what I especially is, uh, what do we have with Enterprise right now? Do we have lease with them on vehicles now?
We do have lease with, within that.
So we just gonna get eleven new ones and then when that lease up, then they gonna give us some more vehicles? How do that go?
So we have cars that need to be turned over. And so we'll give them to Enterprise. They'll go take them to option and sell them.
And they give us some more.
And then they'll give us anything over what um the appreciable value they have for it, which is what we don't pay interest on.
So how many cars do they give us? How many cars do you have?
How many we have leased from there?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about how many we have leased, but I can get that for you. Like I changed out a list of all the vehicles.
Yeah, some of them are total.
Yeah, some of them will have to be totaled.
It's supposed to be financially advantageous when it finally happens, so.
Okay, I need to spread across the minutes the, oh, I'm sorry.
Did we, we, we no motion yet?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was a moment.
Yeah, there was a motion. You were in discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Any needs, motion carries?
Okay, um, I need to spread across the minutes the reimbursement request for the funds for the road truck, bar truck that we will be receiving. Uh, I think deliveries around the first of December. Uh, we will get three hundred seventeen dollars in six, three hundred seventeen thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty uh, from the grant. And then they are also loaning this fifty thousand dollars to pay over four years. So that makes a total of three ninety-seven oh twenty-five. I just need to spread that across the minutes.
Have you heard the request?
Certainly.
Move by Ms. Middleton.
Sir.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries?
Okay, I need to spread across the minutes, an amendment that was made betw- uh, on the agreement between Adams County and ICE. Uh, Mr. President Wilson signed it. I just need to spread it across the minutes. So.
Uh, move by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs, motion carries?
Okay, so now I'm kind of heading into the airport arena. Um, I have a contract here, uh Jeremiah Gerald, he's been a contra- uh, the consultant that's been working on doing SkyWest for us. Um, he has fees per project. I really only think he'll, he's gonna help set up our marketing support services. Um, and uh county presentation. And I think these others we've pretty much already taken care of, like the air, air home conference meetings. We won't, we shouldn't need that anymore. Um, but it's a, it, in total, it's gonna be about fifteen thousand dollars for the year. Starts November first to October thirty-first of next year. So I just need approval for President Wilson to sign it. And Scott has reviewed it.
You heard the request?
Certainly.
Move by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
I, I got one question. Is this uh some additional funds? Because I thought the city was paying it.
City's paying him three seven fifty a month to consult with them. This is a per project for us.
So we just pay fifteen for the whole year?
She's estimating we'll pay fifteen for a year. We technically have to, it's a fee per service.
Yeah, he has to get permission before he starts. So like the.
So he's not gonna go over that?
It's, no. So marketing support services, twelve thousand five hundred. We will approve that so he can go ahead and start working with SkyWest to get marketing going. Um, community presentations, fifteen hundred dollars. I don't think he's gonna do one, but if he does, it'll be here and it'll all be one. And that's fifteen hundred dollars.
I, 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 I don't have a problem with it, but I, I, I will say this. Uh, even though the city is paying him, uh, the mo- the majority of the money is still at the county airport. So he, he, we need to get the information too.
Yes.
Whatever information we need to get it, I'm in front of him. I ain't talking about when something already finna happen. But that's when I'm giving the information.
No, no, no. I tell, he does.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any needs, motion carries?
I forgot to ask you, was it legal? He winked your eye. Does that mean you're legal?
It is. I review the agreement and speak for service.
So uh, we have an agreement and I sent it to Scott this morning. I got it Friday afternoon with a company called Air Terra. Um, their specialty is helping airports like Natchez, who's got um air service coming in to get their ASP um, uh, developed and pushed across to TSA. Um, taking the legal approval, I think it was, I think it's sixty thousand dollars to actually write the plan and help us get it across the finish line with TSA.
Okay.
Um, with legal approval can we sign that agreement? This is probably one of the most important things with getting airport is getting this ASP plan put together.
You heard the request?
So.
Move by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries?
Um, tentative Lee, um, December fifteenth, sixteenth, one of those days. Uh, we're planning an official announcement and the representatives from SkyWest will be here. So more to come on that, but, but fifteenth or sixteenth, that's the two dates that I got this morning.
Okay.
Um, did you look at that RFQ question?
I'll ask you.
Okay.
I, I got a question. So uh, with TSA, uh, somebody gonna have to be trained of.
Yes.
Is that gonna cost us?
I don't think so. I think TSA will take care of that. Uh, it just, just, I couldn't fit me in. So Thursday, Tuesday on my way to the Luxe, I went to go shores and took videos and pictures of their airport, which they took a hangar, or they were actually constructing a hangar and they turned it into a terminal. And it, it looks really nice. It's set up pretty, pretty easily for passengers to come in. It's got, you know, your um, your SkyWest desk, it's got TSA. Um, but I couldn't get into TSA because they didn't have a flight that day, but I did get pictures of how it was laid out. And then on my way back Friday, I stopped in Housper Laurel and looked at their airport. Um, and I got to see TSA because there was a flight getting ready to board. And um, it, it's basically set up just like Baton Rouge, it's just in a much smaller area. Um, it's pretty cool to watch it all, you know, go down. But um, there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, we have a lot of work and not a lot of time. Um, so right now, getting our TSA stuff booby and getting the um actual design of how to change that hangar into a terminal are crucial points right now. So we're getting, we're moving, we're steadily moving on that. We'll meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays just to make sure everybody still got everything rolling.
The RFQ, that was for the engineer.
And uh planning services, yes.
Is, is that similar to what we've already, what the airport machine already did several?
We never followed through with that one.
I know, but is that the same RFQ and everything?
Yes, it's my understanding, yes.
I know. Do you need our input on it or can we, we have a problem with the request that we're submitted before?
Not think so, because we, we did it, you know. Uh, so what it is, is RFQ is a proposal to hire a professional engineer that is project driven. They run the projects and a planning um specialist that helps the engineer and also helps keep track of the, the finances and what's being spent. Um, uh, helping track, you know, different vendors. It's a five-year, it's, I believe this would, that's what we did last time. So it was a five-year agreement. We would go into maybe these professionals. And then any, some contractors needed to perform the project can be hired under them. And the thought process on this is that we are so constrained with time. If we could go this route, then we can, we can bring in contractors faster if we bring them in under these, under these two umbrellas.
Okay, you're trying to get a motion to, to hire those guy and you.
Have to hire to put out an RFQ.
To put out RFQ.
You're asking engineers to submit professional qualifications and they would have a relationship similar to what our county engineer is. We don't pay our county engineer for showing up to meetings and when I pick up a phone and call George or, or whatever. He gets paid every time he does a project and that would be very similar to what this relationship would be. Um, but they do it because they would have a good chance or they get paid on the project. You're happy to use them for project, but you end up using them a bunch just as we.
So is this a recommendation from the, the board out there?
Yes, and this is.
Advisory board?
We're asking, because a commission did it before, uh, they just didn't end up selecting one because we. We're asking, 'cause a commission did it before, uh they just didn't end up selecting one because we lost our airport director and thought it'd be best to wait, do we get a new airport director before doing another one, so.
Well, I'm saying though, we we not in a commission no more, we in advisory situation.
Yes, yes, and it's a recommendation, yes.
All right, you heard the question?
And also the the engineer will get paid through the through the uh the grants. It's not something the county will get reimbursed. So they will get they will get funded from the grant money.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries?
I think that's the person I want on.
Yeah, okay.
Kevin, I've got something to write for. Uh site assessment, y'all asked the county to clean up out for the airport, I mean for the Sheriff's Department to clean. We went out, run the kids gear, took the dogs and finished it up, so I don't know what else we need to do out there, but we were asked to do. I think the county's got it done for two or three each, go out and do whatever.
Okay.
Property and the other thing I have, uh the county will be out for twenty six, or the road for twenty six, twenty seven next year.
Okay. All right. I've got travel for uh Kimberly and Finger, going to start going to a conference and uh on February eighth through thirteenth, and then again on March first through the sixth, that I need to get approved before.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries? Uh I got a letter from uh that says, dear Supervisor Director of Planning of Adams County, our group, which includes Roscoe Barnes from visit Natchez, is interested in securing permission to install a new state historical marker on the ground of the county courthouse at Natchez. In the la- latter part of twenty six, as part of their making their mark, a statewide grant funded initiative to recognize the first African president to hold legislative office in Mississippi after the Civil War. This marker would honor the ten black men elected from Adams County. All costs for the manufacturing installation of market will be covered by the group. The availability of the market would be accompanied by a community event at which we would be happy to remark from board representatives if interested. So I guess we need to give a permission to follow up this.
Yep, so moved.
Moved by Ms. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries? Okay, that concludes my report. Do you have anything else?
That's under the good order. Also, the winner of the big business of the year was Febr, which is something that this county brought into, you know, this boarding, brought into to the county and they're doing really well. They promised some twenty or thirty jobs and they were up to fifty. And it's been a really good project for us all and it looked, you know, real tough there. When they were coming in, we were kind of losing one project and this one kind of came in, so I just thought it would be good to also recognize Febr as the large business of the year and also, you know, that was a really good thing that the board supervisors and still is involved in too.
Okay, and I was uh the, I was supposed to present that award at the Chamber of Commerce, I came up and I asked two people if they would volunteer to present that award and both of them said yes, and one of them got the job and he was very happy about it, I understand afterwards, because there were a lot of big words in there. But thank you, Wes, for doing that for me at the last minute. I wish everybody could just get along in this community and I don't know what all the problems are all the time, but.
Mr. President, before we leave, uh I want you to read this, man. I'm tired of getting me messed about this gray.
My sister spoke with you about the neighbors' unkept grass. Our address is twelve Keel, Keelote, at Endred Heights. That address might be eight and ten. C H H sends its two houses. Check on it when you get a chance.
Yeah, could you check on?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that grass is way up here.
Eight and ten.
Yeah, ninety years old.
Is that Robbie's? Is something you gotta go out and do?
I hear check on it, sent us an email, I put aside and you all.
Yeah, we're.
All right, does anybody?
As requested, I kind of check on it and Robbie's guy comes look at it and then we bring it back to the.
Okay, well. All right, hope y'all have a a a safe week and uh going, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Uh that's just around the corner and any veterans you know, turkey giveaway is is coming up and uh all they need is their DD two fourteen and a and a uh ID card. And they have to be from Adams County. Okay, all right, but if y'all have nothing else, I need a motion to uh recess. Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Wes Middleton. All in favor?